Thank you all for joining us in this special session for a special person that is clearly dear to us all and had an impact on our field that has caused ripples that will be long lasting and will continue to move us. A person that has impacted our community's culture, not only by her seminal groundbreaking and inspiring work, but also herself as a person. Today, you will hear from colleagues from around the globe that Professor Barzai has impacted and touched. We have gathered here to celebrate her, as we would have wished to have her here in person herself in another wonderful IOBC conference. We'd like to chat over coffee, get her advice about our work. Here, she represents homework and students' work which she has done here and spend time together. Professor Sigal Barzai was born in Haifa, Israel, in 1965. Professor of Management at the prestigious School of Business. Sigal was a serial attendee of the IOBC, the Israeli organizational behavior conference, which she avidly attended and presented. I am honored to have worked with Dr. Liat Eldo on this session, and it was a pleasure collaborating and getting all of you to join us in this session. We are honored to have with us in this session not only colleagues and friends, but also family members who've joined. Liat and I talked about the session, and our idea was to celebrate her work. I know she would have liked not only us to continue the research in the field of emotion, but also to practice her findings. So, you know, emotions are contagious. Keep that in mind when you interact with your colleagues and students and family members. And that culture that has values of compassionate love, a culture that is compassionate, tender, caring, and supportive, has real-world outcomes and implications, besides the very important emotional ones. I hope we can continue cultivating this type of culture in our work groups and this community of emotion researchers, but also OB in general, and IOBC in particular, to foster such a culture in our community. I will now give the floor to our presenters. And turn on this, let's see. Yeah, got this, okay. And the first presenter, all the way from Australia, Neil. And Neil, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, and welcome, everybody. I see very many faces in the room. I would love to be with you guys. I've attended very many of the OB conferences in Tel Aviv, and I know you guys pretty well. I have an additional complication at the moment in that I have COVID. That's the croaky voice. It's probably as well, I didn't make the trip. I've been very sick the last week. But I'm up tonight, and it's my honor to make this presentation. So, my name is Neil Ashkenazi. I'm a professor of management at the Business School of the University of Queensland. As many of you probably know, I was an engineer for many years. And I became aware in my former career that the engineering was fine, but the people doing the engineering were constantly making errors of judgment. And consequently, when I began to study what makes people tick, it wasn't long before I came to become aware of the importance of our emotions, that we don't make purely cognitive decisions. We make decisions that are conditioned by our emotional states. My first interest in emotions in the workplace was triggered by Peter Frost, another colleague who sadly passed away much too early in his career. He was at the University of British Columbia. I was a sabbatical at the University of Calgary. And I remember when I was there, he was talking about emotions. I was thinking, what the hell is this? Who studies emotions? And gradually, I got to become aware that serious scholars study emotions. My next sabbatical, which was at Penn State University, I decided to do something about it. When I arrived there, I was sat down by the faculty there, and they asked me, well, what are we going to do? I said, I'm going to write this article about how important emotions are in the workplace. And they said, well, like this. And they showed a couple of pieces. And I said, oh, yes, well, there are lots of people already who have worked on this. So, there was a piece by Blake Ashworth and Ron Humphrey, and another one by a person who, at that stage, I was not well aware of. It was Sigal Barzai's work. And that was the beginning of my journey. I like to organize people and get things going. So, it wasn't long until I was organizing things. And in 1996, I organized a symposium at the Academy of Management meeting, which was held in Cincinnati. And I'll just share a paper. A symposium that we had, now you'll recognize quite a few of these names here. And certainly, you can see. Okay, so this is the symposium that I ran, "Emotion in the Workplace, Not Just Skin Deep." And you can see the speakers at this symposium included Sigal, Blake Ashworth, Michael Pratt, Jeffrey Sonnenfeld, Russell Crumzaro, and Natt Baffey was there as well. I presume Natt's in the audience somewhere here. These were the key people. Natt advised me to make sure that I had a packet of Hershey Kisses handy. And Natt then proceeded to reach into the packet of Hershey Kisses and throw them amongst the audience who reacted with much glee and became a very emotional event, which was the idea at the time. So, that was the beginning of... Let's get to my next document, which is where my speech is written. Which was the beginning of my time in studying emotions. So, Sigal was one of the people in my list of people. We began a lifelong friendship. We were frequently correspondents. And it's great to see that Jonathan is here. Jonathan and I share something in common, which a lot of people may not know, that Jonathan is a Melbourneian. Unfortunately, he's a Carlton Blues supporter, but he'll understand what I refer to there. Nobody else will. Sigal also told me at that stage about the consulting that she was doing, and she would like to tell the story of CEOs of Fortune 500 firms that she used to do consultation with. She continued to consult those right up until her sad demise. And CEOs would always inevitably not have the same experience, give her a lecture about the fact that in their organization, they expect their employees to leave their emotions at home when they come to work. And not only that, they feel very strongly about it, and they become quite emotional about the whole thing. And in telling their story, they demonstrate that it's emotions that's driving their thoughts more than anything else. Sigal had an unquenchable enthusiasm, which she would like to think she has infected everybody in this audience with one of her most famous papers, of course, is the "Emotional Contagion in Groups" paper. And she's presented that paper in 1996. And that's one of her many contributions to the field. Her enthusiasm was unquenchable. Her discipline of knowledge was absolutely amazing. She worked with Barry Store, who is himself an amazing scholar. And it's just been my pleasure to work with Sigal. I cannot think of too much. I already miss her. I feel Jonathan's pain and everybody's pain that she's no longer with us. But her legacy will last much longer. The eight articles that she has in a Meson of Sciences Quarterly are incredibly impactful. And her shadow is over everybody who attends this conference. So, thank you very much for listening to me. I hope you have a wonderful time, and I hope I recover from this damn COVID pretty soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Neil. And the next speaker is Nancy Raffa. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Aric and Liat, for inviting me and for organizing this wonderful session. Also, it's so wonderful to see all of you who are in Israel. Actually, a couple of weeks ago, I thought to myself, should I just get on a plane and come? And I was really torn, but I'm just so happy to see your faces. So, thank you for also allowing us to see the room. It's really wonderful. I see so many wonderful friends. So, what to say? As Neil was talking, I was thinking about my own journey with emotions. And I've always been fascinated by emotions in my own work. My dissertation work looked at how emotions from one role affected engagement in another. And Sigal's work on emotions was really impactful for me as I was doing my own work in this area. And that's why actually, the first time I ever met her in person was at my job talk at Yale. And many of you know, Sigal and I have been close friends and colleagues for over 20 years. But what you probably don't know is that our relationship started out a little bit rocky at this job talk. The job talk was intense. At Yale, all these economists came to the room, and I was talking about how emotion from family affected work. And there was a lot of skepticism in the room, as you can imagine. But Sigal was there as a friendly face, and I was really relieved to have her there in the audience. But what then happened was, we went to this recruiting dinner, which was a bizarre mix of people, I will say. I won't name names. But Sigal got into a fight with the waiter and her colleague about whether the waiter should be serving the women first or not. And I was sitting there like frozen, just absolutely frozen, not knowing what to do, as I was kind of watching this whole thing with Sigal and one of her colleagues back and forth arguing about whether the women should be served first or not. It was just, it was very memorable, as you can clearly see. But the other thing, though, that struck me about that awkward recruiting dinner was that Sigal desperately started to try to smooth over the awkwardness in the conversation and the debate, and tried to rescue it because she realized that the emotions were starting to contage each other in ways that were scary. Needless to say, I did not go to Yale. I went to Wharton. But I did have the smartness to try to recruit Sigal two years later when she was leaving Yale and to persuade her to come to Wharton. And that's the best decision that I think I made in my entire career. And so, she was an incredible colleague. So, you all know her in terms of her incredible work on emotions, but she was an incredible colleague and friend. As a senior colleague, she always made me feel valued. She took me seriously. She listened to me. She sought out my advice, insisting that it was helpful because she was new around here. Even more than like 10 years later, she was still new around here and wanted my advice, even though I'd been there two years before her. So, just her character, as well as her intellect, I think, were towering. And she leaves a broad and deep legacy. She was a true scholar, a master teacher, and, as I said, both a committed community member at the university and in the broader profession. As you know, she was a pioneer in the science of emotions and organizations. She found unobtrusive ways to both induce and to measure emotions from studies that use confederates to induce emotional contagion in teams, to studies that triangulated on emotions using surveys, artifacts, and the like. And I think what's really important for us all to remember as scholars of emotions, and what she would want us to remember, is that she profoundly believed that to make an impact on organizations, you have to study emotions in the wild of teams and organizations, not just in the lab. The combination's all good, but we can't abandon the field. And I think it's really important for us to keep in mind and to remember as scholars of organizations. The evidence that she amassed over her career shows the power of positive emotions to motivate and inspire great performances and creativity. And she also showed that emotions infuse organizational culture. And she pioneered the idea about the power of a culture of compassionate love. And your presence here today and the organization of this session, I think, attests to that type of culture of compassion and caring that she was such a strong proponent of and believer in. And I think she really was a great scholar because of a key underlying factor. She pursued excellence in all things. So, anybody who worked with her knows that that was both a truth. It was also not easy at times. She paid attention to the big picture and the fine-grained detail. She was slow to get her articles under review, in part because she wouldn't submit them unless she was absolutely sure that the theory and logic were strong, that the method was rock solid, and that the data had been checked in triplicate. And even then, she would give it a few days or weeks to mull. Mull was like one of her favorite words. I always remember her talking about mulling. But her pursuit of excellence also applied to teaching. And I know that we're here talking about research, but I think that one of the things that made her such a great scholar and made her impact so lasting in our field is she was a master educator, a master teacher. And her contributions extend beyond her own interactions with students. When she had been here at Wharton for a few years, she was asked to take on the Herculean task of overhauling our leadership and teamwork class, the core class that we teach to all of the MBA students. And her first act in that task was somehow she convinced me to join her in that task, which shows her persuasive abilities because I was not tenured at the time. I was still untenured. So, she was incredibly persuasive, and I was incredibly stupid in agreeing to do this. But it worked out, so all's well that ends well. And what we had learned in our experiences teaching negotiations was about the power of experiential learning. And we wanted to innovate and apply that to teaching leadership and teamwork. We brought emotions into that course. We have a session, and Adam Grant, who teaches that course with me, is here speaking later. We have emotions as a front and center aspect of that course. We teach our hardcore finance MBA-type Wharton students the power and importance of emotions in organizations, and that emotions are data. And that is Sigal's legacy that comes through. In terms of the community, as a faculty colleague, she contributed in countless ways to our community. And I have to say that I knew it. I always knew how immensely important her contributions were. But we have certainly felt that in the last two years, the absence of her presence in terms of her ability to contribute day to day in our community. And it is a huge loss. It has been, we can't fill it with one person. She was more than one person in terms of what she did. And we're trying our best, but she's a hard person to replace. And we won't ever be able to do that. I feel so lucky to have had her as a mentor, a colleague, and a friend. For those of you who interacted with her personally, you know, she was always late. So, I was laughing as we were starting late. I was thinking, oh, Sigal, she would have been right on time in this room. She was always late. She was always willing to laugh at herself. And one of the things that I admire so much about her was her ability to just laugh at her own foibles, not take herself too seriously. But even with all of that, she was a force of nature. She was fierce and kind, loyal and intense, moral and forgiving, brilliant and gritty, and most of all, loving and compassionate. And while I am so sad that we've lost her far, far too soon, I am so grateful that her legacy to the field is so clear. I'm also thankful that I got to spend a lot of time with her last year in the month before she passed and got a chance to say goodbye. It was hard, for those of you who were with me. I know it was hard, but it was also a huge gift. And the other piece of that gift was that she was witness to the many people who reached out to her to tell her how much she had meant to them. And she heard you, and she knew. And it made a huge difference. And I think that was a huge lesson for me in thinking about how to say goodbye. It's almost two years since I got a call from her on New Year's Eve morning, and I knew something was wrong immediately because she was calling me at 8:30 a.m. And for those of you who knew her, you will know she was not a morning person. And so, I knew when I got that call that it was not good. And she called me at the time because she had had a seizure and was in the neural ICU. And they didn't know what had caused it. And as we learned more, unfortunately, the news didn't improve. And her last year was very hard for her, for her family, for all of us who loved her so much. But what I think she would want us all to remember is that she pursued this fight in the last year with every ounce of grace and tenacity that we had come to expect from her. And in the end, this approach allowed her to live with hope rather than fear, as I think she would have wanted us all to do. One of her studies was on how hope trumps fear. And I think that that's the legacy that she would want us to remember. And actually, to continue her legacy, I'm just going to mention, Jonathan may talk about this a little bit more when he speaks at the end, but Jonathan, you'll forgive me if I preempt this. But I just want to let you all know that Jonathan and her family and some friends have donated, have made a gift to Wharton to really continue her legacy in two ways. One, we're going to be sponsoring a prize for a paper in OB that is focused on emotions that will be given out at the OB Junior Faculty Conference every year. And that's going to start next year. And the second aspect of this fund and the legacy is that we're going to establish, not this coming year, but probably the next year when the funding is there fully, to establish a post-doc for somebody studying emotions to continue her legacy here at Wharton. And so, I think that this very meaningful gift will really help to cement and solidify the legacy that she leaves. So, I will just end with the traditional saying, "Zichona Libracha," "May her memory be a blessing." Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to talk about research. Actually, this is a conference, right, about research? And I'm going to talk about the way I got to know Sigal. And this is pretty much thanks to Annette, for being able to speak here and advise. And I'm going to talk about emotional contagion in virtual teams, the spreading of emotions and interactions with them, not limited to emotions. So, I read this paper, and Annette signed it to us in class. And I just couldn't put it down. I mean, it was like, wow, this is so cool. One person coming in and influencing the whole team and the whole design of the confederate and the triangulation of the way emotions is measured and assessed, and how this has such an impact, not only about emotions, but the way the team functions afterwards. And what is emotional contagion, and how does it work, and how does it impact us? Got me really going, I got infected, contained by this drug. This is what I wanted to do. And the whole idea of emotional contagion, one person comes into the room, and then everyone feels either happy or maybe negative emotions as well also work. And the main mechanism behind this in Sigal's work and the idea of how it operates is this mimicking of nonverbal cues. It's the ability to mimic the tone of voice. You mimic the body language. You mimic your facial expressions, and then you catch this emotion. And so, the team interacts, and she shows it nicely with the confederate that comes in, and everyone catches this emotion and leaves the room, feeling that emotion, but it's also impacted their cooperation and the conflicts between those teams. And what got me thinking was, what happens in virtual rooms? What happens in those interactions where people interact over email, limited nonverbal cues, they can only type, they can only send an email that is sent, and people will see it some other time, you're not really sure when. There's no tone of voice, no body language, no face. Can emotions still be contagious in those kind of settings? And luckily, Annette played along, and together, we could draft this work. And we used this card die, which I brought from Michigan, where I did my undergrad and worked there for a while, where we created this theme, this virtual team. We brought people into the lab. We separated them into separate areas, cubicles. And each one randomly got a color and a shape associated with them. And the shape represented their specialty. Their specialty is making circles, for example, which could be done really easily, and they could share it with their friends, their colleagues in this company. And then, they needed the triangle and the X and the square. And they had to communicate with one another and share with another to complete their own individual task, but also they were given a group task. I'm trying to make as many orders as possible. And we assigned both an individual and a group performance element to it, which was additional payment for the participants. And the main thing is that they can only interact via email. They can only send messages via email. They could only send messages and to one another. They arrived in the lab, we managed to, to uh, get uh, them all come in, in the time, not, not knowing that one of the person was our confederate, of course. Uh, and then they measured, we measured their emotion at the time of arrival. We gave them instructions to do this complicated task where they had to buy and sell and negotiate their scarcity as far as parts and everything. We gave them a practice round, then they played it for twelve minutes each round, gaining a new task each round. And uh, on this board, then we measured again their emotions. And I'll talk about how we did that uh, in a minute. And of course, we pay them and give them. So there was a confederate. One of the participants actually had a few. It was much easier, we didn't need to have an actor. All we had to have is this one computer where they were sitting at and had the bank of, of words that they could use. And uh, confederate displayed anger, happiness via the text. Um, we also had to create this idea of how they will negotiate. So we also created a uh, resonant and flexible way of negotiating restricted rules of what to do in each interaction. I'm not gonna go into that element, I'm mostly gonna talk about the emotion and then uh, we also, well, for the rounds of revision, we also added the control condition later on, with no confederate. Uh, so, so the idea of angry happiness, uh, of this one person in the team that sends those messages, um, angry, resolute and happy flexible being the congruent conditions. We also look at those incongruent conditions. I'm not gonna go into that very much, but, but for example, the messages that would be sent in the happy condition would be, oh, this is wonderful, I'm so happy to work with you. Uh, this is so nice that you're sending me these parts sometime and thank you for sharing. And everyone's will be, oh, come on, uh, you're making me angry with this offer and then you're not working fast enough or, or elements like that, showing anger and the resoluteness. Um, it was toughness in negotiation where the flexibility was still holding you around. You're not losing anything, but you were more flexible as far as the crisis. Just to make sure that we could actually display emotions that in text without emojis, that was prior to emoji, just by writing emails. Um, and each time the confederate was a randomly different color, okay? We asked the participants at the end, did this uh, triangle, we asked them about all of the participants expressed anger. And this is when the triangle was the uh, confederate and we should, we see that, that they did recognize this action of this person. And also happiness on the other side in the happy condition, when we have to break happy messages, they recognize that. And then we actually read the messages that they wrote, just to make sure we had um, people uh, read it without knowing who the confederate was. And the confederate messages had an average of about forty-four negative messages, angry messages and angry conditions. So imagine getting that many emails through like a period of thirty or so minutes and you're writing. This is spread out to all the, the teams, but this is the messages that they wrote. And then the happy condition, they also did that. So our confederates played a role uh, in a way that we can see. So enough of the emotions. So this is the, the measure of negative affect. Uh, you can see when they came into the lab, uh, not much going on there. When they left the lab, I guess the task was not as fun as I thought, so they all uh, had more negative affect. But we can see that the angry condition was significantly higher in the self-report emotion um, after the task, after the English, the English. Um, with the positive affect, okay, people came in with positive affect. Um, what we can see is that there is a significant difference, not as big as it, as it is in the, with the negative emotion, but there is a significant difference in the happy uh, where they leave the room just a little bit happier or in positive affect. Um, and we can see that, that angry conditions, they're not as happy as they came in. We also aggregated and looked at the emotions of the team members without the confederate to see if this was also an element of everyone feeling it. So it wasn't just um, the interactions uh, between this one person or me feeling it, was it uh, about the room? So this is question that we asked them to say about each individual member. And we can also see that uh, difference there, where in the angry condition, there were, the team seemed angry and in the happy condition, it seemed happier. Um, and then we have the messages themselves. So there's no mimicking here, obviously, there's no, um, you, you know, we didn't measure that, but is there mimicking in the text that they write? Maybe that's the mechanism. And we can see that this is what removing the messages sends to the confederates. This is just the messages that they're sending to the other people in the team. We see that they sent many more negative messages in the angry condition and many more happy messages in the positive condition. So yes, emotion contagion can still happen with non-verbal cues. Uh, are limited, only text-based and remote. I was, this was my masterpiece. And I, I, I was so excited about this work and, and I went to Anathis and said, I want to build this. And uh, this is the first Academy of Management I went to in Philadelphia, two thousand and seven. And Anathis managed, managed to get us into a symposium, uh, as you can see, uh, chaired by uh, Greenberg and Edwards. And Sigal was there. For me, this was like, wow, as a, as a graduate student, she'll be in the same session and she could see how my work builds and grew. And I was just so excited to have this opportunity. And this was the first time I got to meet Sigal and interact with her. We were talking about before, about our gods that we see, yeah, coming into flesh. And, and this was really uh, uh, an amazing way to start my academy of management career being there and, and I'll cherish that. And then you see, you can see how long it takes to publish, maybe by two thousand and seven, two thousand and eleven, this time it came out. Uh, you know, VHP, we had to add more things besides that initial presentation. Um, you know, for it to get published, of course, with the name of the boss. Um, and I'm really proud of this work that, uh, got published. And of course, then I, I graduated and went on to a post-doc and while I was an student. And my postdoc with Professor Ben Cliff, unfortunately couldn't make it. Um, we got a call in the second year and Sigal said, I, maybe come over and, and be a manager. Spend a year of class. And uh, I was looking the other way, going, trying to find my position back home. And I passed on this, returned it. But the relationship with Sigal did not end. I mean, since then, we've interacted a lot here at the I O B C. I presented the session or a lot presented, I'm not sure which conference this says specifically. Uh, work that we've been trying to publish with uh, Professor Ben Cliff on the dark side of the smiley. And, and uh, when we eventually submitted it to SPPS, um, they told us that we need to have different uh, editor come in because we have an association with the journal. And we asked Sigal, which gave us comments after we gave the talk here at I O B C. And we asked if she was willing to be the handling editor. And she really pushed us, uh, as you, you've heard and, and made this, that paper uh, better than, than initially, of course, submitted and around and everything. And I'm really proud that they had uh, the ability to interact with me there. And then our last interaction uh, that occurred uh, in two thousand and twenty-one um, virtual Academy of Management meeting. Um, so I was in the office, it was late at night in Israel. I was all alone, opening with the Zoom and there was a session on emotion that I wanted to see, which was interesting. I knew Sigal uh, was disgusted, I also knew she wasn't her best. Um, and I came to, to, to see the session and this is a screenshot I took because they misspelled my name and it made me mad. I was like, I, I took a photo, I sent it to my wife, my sister, listen, my last name in Hebrew is four letters, look what happens when you do it in English, it goes all over the place. And I was really proud that they were citing my work and, and that they, okay, they missed out their name, who cares? As long as they refer to my work and it's the work that you just seen. And I'm just, you know, sitting in my office and then Sigal comes. And you, you can see she, she, she wasn't there. Um, but then she comes in and she discussed, she does the discussion, the discussion session where she debates everyone. And then she says to this colleague, which I'm not gonna mention, she said, you cited Aric Cheshin, and she pronounces my name really like an Israeli and says, um, you know, we had the honor of having this uh, uh, speaker here. Didn't expect it at all. Um, maybe you would like to say a few words about uh, this because this is the go-to citation that you cited or something like that. And, and I was so moved and honored to do that and, and say a few words. And this, this was actually the last uh, interaction. I see, no, we had another session, the deal was that, or you think that I, I went in and we chatted with her. Um, I'm ending with my, the logo of my lab and um, so. I guess I'm really dead. And um, sorry.
It's okay to be emotional. My discussion about emotions.
Um, oh, well, that's not a mission. Um, and um, I've learned things, learned things about Sigal since she passed away. So the fact that she was born in Ha'atzlav. So uh, I hope that my lab could carry that um, that large stone and do work that makes a pro. I'm sorry. And um, nah, yes, uh.
And so, dear family and colleagues, I wanted to say also friends and then I realized that actually, I think all her colleagues were also her friends. And I've met Sigal very few times, but I interacted with her and corresponded to her a long time. Actually, I knew about Sigal before I met her because Yochi Kornfrosh, only most of you know, she was my master's student and then she went to Berkeley for her PhD and she became Sigal's best friend and I heard about her. And look, and when I met her, Aric was also in the, in the Academy of Management meeting. We spent some time together, we went to dinner with Yochi and Sigal and I realized that everything I heard about her was, was true. And and except for, I mean, everybody spoke and would speak about all her talents and her research or that she was also so cheerful and so easygoing, not that personal, so she will be. The second time I met her on I O B C, I actually scheduled the meeting after the, after her session because at that time I would be working with my course over modeling and I was so absorbed in it and we, we spoke and tried to find out what's the difference between course over and emotional contagion. But even now, I'm not sure. I know exactly, Eric, maybe we should think about it. But she, she was so original, she was so, she was so brainstorming, was really wonderful. She was so bright and it was clear that her inspiration was uncompromising perfection. And then after this meeting, we went back home because her in-laws used to live near, near knowledge. The way she told me how much she loves Israel, how much she loves to come to her in-laws and she, she plans to come again and again. We then co- really continued corresponding about course of her and the written effect and emotional contagion. Feel like finally developed my, my model. And actually, the last time I corresponded with her was when Leat was going to Wharton for a post-doc and I wrote to her and I told her, it's a very dear person to me, it's time and please do your best to help her and she needs any help and she wanted, she will do it. And unfortunately, it was Leat who probably spent a very long time that Sigal was so taken. It was really very difficult to bridge more. Sigal in Hebrew is the name of a flower, violet. I looked it up in the dictionary where it states, violet connotes legality, leadership, strength, popularity, origin and grace. The violet flower is characterized by spirit, beauty, delicacy and vibrancy. Nothing can describe Sigal more than you, Martina. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, Yochi. Um.
Thank you. Asked me to contribute something to the, to the session. He talked about, he talked, he talked about contributing an empirical piece because it's after all, a conference and the, he asked, like, he asked me to talk about a project that was influenced by Sigal's work. And I told him, look, there isn't a project that was influenced by Sigal's work. It's my career that was influenced by Sigal. Um, and then, and this is what I can talk about. So it started with Mina, who, uh, when she learned that I'm, my husband and I are moving to San Francisco, she decided that I have to do a PhD. And when Mina says something, I say, okay. And then we go to San Francisco, we go to the Israeli consulate. And my husband, whose name is also Yochi, hi Barry, my husband's name is also Yochi. And he talked about his wife wanting to go to grad school and if somebody knows anything about Berkeley and people were pretty skeptical, but one of the persons at the consulate, Janice Brenner, she said, look, I know a guy, Jonathan, and I think that his wife is at Berkeley, let me connect you. And that was exactly thirty years ago. I think it even was January and I know that yesterday was thirty years since we moved to the United States. And I think it was even January that uh, Jonathan uh, was introduced into our lives and made the connection with Sigal. And um, that was it. That was the beginning of a friendship. It's a family. Like, like on the, on that first Passover, we were invited to LA to Sigal's parents say there. And uh, these things continue until, until now. Uh, so um, basically, uh, I can say that um, since then, it, I ca- I cannot see myself as a career person without Sigal's a, a presence. She really helped me through the whole process of application of uh, getting, breaking into this new culture and the new program that I knew nothing about. Coming from Israel, uh, uh, it, it was a very, very, very different world that I entered in. And Sigal really, like, she helped me so much getting there and understanding what's going on. And uh, she has been there with me throughout the program all the time, uh, including like, including many things. I, I, I will, I will try to stay here on the, on the professional side. Uh, when it came time for a going on the job market and I had to practice my job talks, Sigal said, okay, how about if you come to Yale, she was at Yale then, how about if you come to Yale and you practice your talk there? And this is what happened. She gathered her colleagues and I practiced my talk at Yale. Uh, and Nancy mentioned earlier, the month before Sigal passed and hearing uh, from uh, everybody, basically. Basically, like, it was a major gift. And then I said, other people talking about Sigal organizing a job to practice. And I said, oh, I thought that I'm unique, right? But apparently I wasn't. And then, and of course, it, it was very like, like Sigal. One of the things with Sigal is that she could do hands-on things at once, like raising children. Building in her career, being a daughter, being a friend. She always had the time to talk with you on the phone. She always, like, like she was always there, no matter how busy she was. And that was one of the amazing things with Sigal. And I remember one time that I, she asked me something about envy. And then I was, I was starting my work on envy then. And I, like, I was surprised that she's asking me. And, and she said, what do you mean? For me, you are the expert on envy. And she gave me this confidence that I know things. And, and it always remained with me, this, what do you mean? You're the expert. And, and that's it. She was my mentor. She taught me about doing only the best. And striving as high as I can. And then it's a little bit difficult for me to talk about her. I actually did, this is the first time that I do talk about her in front of an audience. I can only tell that she was my mentor, my colleague, my role model. And on top of all, she was my friend professionally and personally. And that's it. And I, I was very lucky to have amazing mentors in my life. And I'm very lucky to have Sigal there all the way. So thank you, everybody.
Hi, I hope you see. I think yes, we're recording. Those who don't know me, my name is Ali Gabriel. I'm at the University of Arizona. And I am just so sorry that I'm not there with you all. I was supposed to be there. I was so looking forward to it. But then some life things came up and in the end, those life things got canceled. And we're recovering from COVID and RSV in our house. So you really didn't want me there anyway. But I was really looking forward to being there, to be a part of this celebration and just community to celebrate the life of Sigal. Who was just so incredible. I did not get any opportunities to interact with Sigal in person. But I wanted to share just a couple of stories of anecdotes that I think really personify who she was. As a emotion scholar, as a doctoral student, I just, to say I worshipped her and her work is probably an understatement. I was just so inspired by the questions she asked and the way she asked them. And how she just had this ability to make emotions and study of emotional culture so rich and meaningful and important. In one of the first opportunities I got to meet her was in May of 2016 at a small conference at Penn State. That Alicia Grandy put on sponsored by the NSF on emotions and interdisciplinary work on emotions. And I remember sitting next to my doctoral advisor, Jim Deependorf. And I just kept whispering to him like, it's awesome here. I'm going to get to meet her. I'm going to get to talk to Sigal and tell her how much I love her and I love her papers. And I had worked myself up into this tizzy. And we got to one of the coffee breaks and she came up to me and I was just, I was ready. I was like, okay, I get to tell her everything I think about her papers and what she's wonderful and this and that. And she came up to me and said, I introduced myself and she said, so nice to meet you. And before I could say anything, she was like, I want to tell you that I love the annual review paper you and Alicia wrote on emotional labor. And she then went into detail about the things she loved about the paper and why she thought it was meaningful and why she thought it was going to make a contribution. And I was just, one, starstruck, but two, just speechless, that the senior person in the field cared about what I had to say. But not only that, she took the time to really get to know who I was and the work I was doing to tell me why she thought it was important. And I have just replayed that interaction over and over and over again. I got to spend the rest of the day with her, doing a horrible job navigating me, her, and a team of people through Penn State's campus, which is really embarrassing as a Penn State alum. And it was a scavenger hunt and I was a tourist at Penn State and I, we, we came in last because I took us on this weird route. Because I like, didn't want to embarrass myself or not impress her. She was just so funny and I have all these hilarious pictures of us all over campus with her just giddy and smiling and thinking it was just the funniest thing to get to see the place. And I think that's what I miss the most about seeing her and getting to see her in the future at these emotions get together. She was so joyful. She really embodied love and compassion and understanding. And she just really challenged us to make the case for why emotions matter, why they're data, why they're important. The last time I really got to interact with her was virtually at the Academy of Management Conference, the last one she attended. And it was at a virtual ceremony for the OB division. And I saw her in there and she saw me and she sent me a couple of chat messages saying hi and how excited she was to see Eleanor in the background of the image. And she just really got to know you and, and your life and who you were. And I think that's a good goal for all of us in this field that just seems so fast paced and seems like we can never quite keep up. And that there's always something else, some other goal or achievement to be chasing is, wouldn't it be nice to know each of us a little bit deeper and a little bit more, you know, more of who we are? And that's really what I aspire to now. When I talk about emotions work, I talk about the people behind the emotions and why our emotions matter. And why they're cues for how we're thinking and how others are thinking and how that can bridge the gap between us versus drive us apart. And so that's really what I'll keep thinking about when I think about Sigal. That's what I'll think about when I teach my motivation and wellbeing seminar, where we have a whole Sigal Barzade Emotional Culture Week. That's what I'll think about when I teach to executives or organizations about why emotions are data points that we really need to care about. And I just hope you all remember, she was really funny and she had the best outfits. And that's what I want to remember the most.
Hi, everyone. I'm Guy from the University of Harupah. I didn't know how to prepare, prepare this stuff. I actually didn't go over my slides. Instead, I went over my emails with Sigal and then my WhatsApp messages. I told Derek a couple of them in the morning. And, and as I was hearing the story, a few experiences I've had with Sigal jumped to my memory. For example, when Nancy told how she only accepted excellence. And she told me when we were working on, on the paper that I would present. And that she had an R and R in JAP and about the paper about the companion in the lab. And, and with data from the army and how it makes people more accurate and objective measure of performance. And that one reviewer insisted in changing the name, not calling it companion in the lab. And all her colleagues were like, okay, just, let's change the name. Did the paper accept it? Okay. And she said that there's no way of changing the name. And, and she said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna insist on it. And I was like, I was thinking like, why? I just want to change the name. But she didn't, as Nancy said, she didn't accept anything below excellence. And this paper got accepted, of course, with the companion in the lab. And so this was, on one, on that, one hand, this striving for excellence. And on the other hand, her responsiveness, she told me she would get 250 emails a day. And she was still so quick to reply and so thorough and so considerate. So I'm not an emotional researcher. I'm listening researcher and my wife usually depends. You're listening, you. So. And in contrary to me, she actually practiced what she preached. And, and when her health situation started to deteriorate. And she would send a monthly health update. And, and she would ask that we don't say how poorly we are and that we will share happy stories and positive experience. And I still remember the picture, picture with dominions, with the dozen dominions. And when I would be texting with her, even after her situation started and started to get worse. She would actually lift my spirit up. And, and she was also, on the other hand, so scientific that when she told, she said how. It was in one of her first health updates, she said, it's on one hand, it's the worst of times and the best of times. That she found out how much companion in the club she had from all her friends. And she explained the term companion in the club. Like, I'm gonna, you know, she defined it, including one footnote to the email. So it was such a, I, I've never seen something that this before, such a unique combination of a loving person and a true professional. And, and I didn't know what to do with this work. And after she passed away, it's just set aside on my drawer. And, and thanks to Alec, Alec wanted to tell me that I want to join and I want to, in honor of Sigal. I want to help you advance it. And I, I was actually just postponing it and say, I don't know how to handle it. It was harder emotionally than professionally. I just wanted to postpone dealing with it. But Alec and I know that we want to get this paper out in, in her honor. And it would be pretty provocative since Alec gave me a good kick. We got two objections in one year, so we're in progress. And so I'm going to present, I, I don't know how much I'm gonna be able to present from this set of these studies. And but I don't think the research will be, it's important. So we call the paper, "Sowing the Seeds of Love by Listening: Cultivating a Culture of Companion in the Club Through Listening Training." And it's not working. So. From an interview with Sigal in 2014, companion in the club is. Companion club is evidence when colleagues who are together, day in and day out, ask and care about each other's work and even non-work issues. They are careful of each other's feelings. They show compassion when things don't go well. And they also show affection and caring. And that can be about bringing somebody a cup of coffee when you go get, when you go get your own or just listening when a coworker needs to talk. And I'm just putting it for no reason. And so cultural companions are a set of norms, artifacts, underlying values and assumptions that reflect the expression or suppression of affection, caring, compassion, and tenderness. And in a social unit. And there, there is a vast amount of knowledge on the concept of companion in the club. We know it's to higher job satisfaction, commitment, group attachment, gratitude and voice. And but we know relatively little on how to create companion in the club. And in, in groups in the workplace. And as a listening researcher, by definition, it struck me as really connected. That when people really listen to one another, because they show caring. It will, might also lead to a sense of compelling the club within a group and in the workplace. So Sigal's work was my motivation and I was really happy that she, even though she gave so many emails that she collaborated with us on this project. I would briefly try to define listening. It only took us about 12 years to come up with this definition. And this is, paper came out in the annual review of organizational psychology and organizational behavior. And, and we worked on writing up this definition for a year. So listening is both multi-dimensional. And so it's complex and holistic. It's complex in the sense that it includes several dimensions of attention, such as maintaining constant eye contact with the person you are listening to. And you can check me after this talk. When you really listen to someone, they want to look at you the entire time, especially when they're introspective. Their eyes are going to go up, down, left, right. But every few seconds, without their awareness, they're going to come back, they're going to look back at you to see if you're really listening. And if they see that you're still looking at them, they will gain confidence. They will gain psychological safety that you're still with them. On the other hand, if they see that you're distracted or you're playing with your phone or you're doing something else, they will say that this entire time was just not with them. And this gaze, this eye contact is a really important example of nonverbal behavioralistic. And another dimension is comprehension or understanding. Every person has an innate need to feel understood, the feeling that, that he gets me, he gets me. And this is a major component of listening, the behaviors that we use in, in my lab to, to convey understanding. Asking open questions. There is an entire literature on question asking, with respect to inquiry, how to ask questions that show that you're listening. And you can't ask a good question if you weren't. And, and the other way is to provide reflection or paraphrase the speaker's message. So that you intend to understand. And the last component is a positive intention or benevolent intention towards the speaker. And to show that mainly that you want to help, you want to help the speaker or you're being nonjudgmental toward the speaker. This is something that Carl Rogers strongly advocated when he talked about active listening and the definition that deviated from what Rogers' original meaning in an organization. There was a lot of criticism on active listening, how it's used in organization now that he's, they want to get into it. But just one thing about nonjudgmental and positive intention, it does not mean that you have to agree with what you hear. It means accepting the speaker's right to express or to hold a specific viewpoint. And, and this is something that is really difficult to know from our polarized society. That when we, Rogers pointed the need to evaluate, that every person has an innate need to evaluate what they hear. So if I hear something that maybe I disagree with or may I think differently, I might automatically like go like this or for my arms to be so. And there is a misperception that the listener is a passive actor in the conversation. I had a talk a few months ago with the dean of prestigious business school outside of Pittsburgh. Everyone, everyone knows how to listen. We need to teach our students how to speak. And this misperception is quite frequent that we think, that people think that listening is passive and it is the speaker who sets the tone in the conversation. But we know from evidence and from many, many studies that this did not be further or equal. The listener determines that it's 50% of the conversation, but it goes through many behaviors. It's called back channel behaviors. And, and the listening, the holistic part is that the speaker's perception is relatively unified. So when I ask you to rate how your romantic partner or your colleague or your friend or even a stranger, how they listen to you. You won't be going, well, their attention was mediocre and their comprehension, you, you would have a holistic assessment. I will truly listen to, or they were poor listeners. So while the behaviors or the dimensions are really multifaceted. Our speaker's perception, which this determines the downstream effect of speakers, is relatively realistic and can be even quick. This is why we argue that it's hard to fake listening if you don't have a profound conversation. So why would listening training instill companion in the club? So I thought I made this point or even not, I'd like to talk about it after. So we had a model combining some of the effects we know from culture of companion in a club. And, and we wanted to see if Sigal wanted to call it education. I, I have been doing listening training studies for seven years now, but Sigal wanted the word education. So we kept the word education in the direction, would change the words from training notes to education, listening, training, education. So I'm going to call it high quality listening education. And, and culture of companion in the club as a mediator for outcomes, both of well-being, willingness to cooperate. So interpersonal and also organizational and intra-personal, such as resilience and organizational commitment. And I was, we had. And I was, we had, I will not describe, maybe one study, I'll describe one study. We conducted three studies, one was a longitudinal study with teachers in schools in Israel. That we followed up with seven measurements and we found that listening, the listening training. That program that was carried out throughout the entire year increased the teachers. Oh, I'm missing a study. So it it increased the listening quality of the teachers and the culture of companion in a. Love and three of the four D V's did not increase commitment to the, to the school. But it did increase well-being, resilience and willingness to cooperate. And I will get to more, in to more details on the quess I field experiment. So yesterday, Mary Cooper said that we need to do more intervention studies. I completely support it, but it's really hard to publish this kind of studies, it's a really difficult data to get. It's not a clean experiment, as dog will say, it's a, it's the silver standard because we don't have a random assignment. And and then no one appreciates it because the sample is too small, because we couldn't randomly assign the employees within the unit. But anyway, and we wanted to, in in the first study, the longitudinal study, we did not have a control group. Yes, I did assessment of the listening education program of the teachers through the entire year. So we conducted a quiz, a field experiment, employees in a risk management company. We had two branches of the company, one branch received the listening trade education program. And the other was waiting list, other branch was on the waiting list in a different geographical location. And we had three waves of measurements, we measured the D V's that they showed you previously. And before the training, same time for both groups. Immediately after the listening training, the listening training was. And it was three, twelve hours overall, three to four hour sessions. And and so we measured it immediately after that, one day after. And again, in order to see if there's a stable effect, so we measured it again about three weeks after the training ended. And so. We found a significant interaction with regard to the listening quality of the employee. So if I'm an employee in this company and I participated in the listening training. I rated, my colleagues also participated in the listening training as better listeners compared to the control group or there was no significant change. And we also found a significant interaction between time or the manipulation and. Time and the manipulation on culture of companion in a club. So employees in the listening training for a teaching education program. And felt higher sense of rated others as more companion in a club, as we see how to measure when you're an other person. So it's not sent reports, a report on others, our others are tender, caring, compassionate. And we also found an effect on well-being. And again, we didn't, we would find a significant interaction on everything besides commitment, like in study one. And and we found also support for the mediation model. We control for the initial measurement. And so what you see here is the change, the change in companion club, change in the well-being. These are residual scores. And and I know I'm out of style. And so. And and we replicated these findings during the pandemic in a, in a virtual education program. And third study. And so this is a set of studies that we have. And a few take home messages from the project is that a culture of companion club can. We, we, I'm, I'm taking time, but we had, Sigal and I had many discussions how to frame this paper. One way was. To be, to frame it around listening, so we know listening has many positive organizational effects. But we now culture of companion truck can explain why. So this was one strategy, the other one to build around culture of companion club and say, well, we know less about the antecedent, let's present listening as an antecedent. So we went with the first option of going with listening, which is newer to the OB literature. After being kicked out of both journals for ten years, we finally are getting some attentions in the, in recent years. So we went with listening and 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 culture of companion club as a mediator. It's like, why do we get positive downstream effect of listening? And culture of companion club is one important mediator that we need to consider. And with regard to the effective, the null effect on effective commitment, I was actually. I was disappointed, but I was kinda happy because one of the criticisms that usually we receive in listening experiments is. Well, is listening basically just a halo effect, so you're doing something nice? And then everything good goes up and everything bad goes down, so it's not really distinguishable from one thing from the other. So we, this data at least showed that it's not like this exactly. So because of commit, effective commitment to the organization, it actually did increase in the third study. But on average, we didn't find anything interesting there, so maybe there is, so we know that there is something that. And disentangle between different effects of listening. And and something that they didn't say in the quasi experiments, we found that even in the third measurements. And the effect stayed relative, relatively, it's only three weeks, but relatively stable after the training. So if I'm CEO of an organization and I invest a lot of money in a training, I wanna see that they get, that the effects stay and don't disappear with instructors. So we saw that the effect did not disappear. It was still significant relative, relative to the initial level of measurement after three weeks. So I can't say it won't have lasted a year, but at least it's not a length of experiment where it disappears immediately after the session. And one big caveat of this project and many, all of our training studies is that. To date, there is not a single study showing that need, that people notice. The change in individuals who undergone listening training. So all our participants participated in the listening training. But do people who, the employees who participate in listening training become affected social agents? That sort of, can you see changing me after I participated in the listening training? We don't know that because in this data, all of the employees in the experiment who were part of the listening training, we don't have any. Assessment from colleagues who did not participate and interacted with them. I see, I know of a single study, we tried to do it in nineteen eighty-six about parents and children, the parents. Had participated in the listening training, they reported, recorded that they became better listeners, their children, we reported no change. And so this is a lingering question that we have. The parents or the kids? I have to, nineteen ninety-six, I, now or I need to. I need, I need to have a check. I'm not sure. And so, and anyway, a lingering question is, can listening training promote affecting social agent that can. Have a spillover effect to the organization, to society? And we believe so, but we need stronger data to show it. So. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, guys. Okay, Barry, you are our next kicker. And if you can unmute your mic, please. Would you not hear you?
As many of you know, I was Sigal's primary advisor during her graduate student days at Berkeley. One of our first research projects, together with a test of the costs and benefits of dispositional affect. I had been doing work on dispositional affect before this. So the cost and benefits of dispositional affect on decision-making and other aspects of managerial performance. On this project, I was the advocate of the sadder but wiser thesis. Arguing that happy people may be somewhat fast and loose or sloppy decision-makers. That they wouldn't be able to recognize important details, contradictions or contingencies. So we tested this in an in-basket exercise that was meant to simulate a series of tough decisions during a particular day in the life of manager. As you might imagine, Sigal took the opposite stance from me. Arguing that our sample of MBAs with with high positive affect would actually do much better on the in-basket exercise than those with lower P A. Well, as a senior member of the research team, I made sure that we used a task that would give the sadder but wiser thesis the best opportunity for support. There were some subtle conflicts and the, and difficulties built into the, in, into the, in the in-basket. And one would really have to pay a lot of attention and be very careful and diligent to do it right. Exactly as you predict from the sadder but wiser literature. Therefore, our results, I thought our results would show that there were some costs to high positive affect. Or at least show that on some dimensions, more negative people would prevail. I believe this study would also put Sigal's happy talk back in the bottle and give her a more measured view of life. It might also validate my somewhat curmudgeonly nature. Sigal used to call me an optimistic pessimist or a pessimistic optimist, I can't remember which one. So anyway, the, when the results came in, I lost big time. Those with high positive affect measured by self and observer ratings performed better on nearly every measure of decision-making in the in-basket. Also in a group exercise, they were higher, the positive affect people were higher on every dimension of performance. So. So I should have listened much more closely to her, but we wrote the paper up as a, as sort of a battle between the, the two points of view. And obviously she won. From this initial study, Sigal went on to, to conduct a truly wonderful study on affective contagion for her dissertation. As most of you know, Sigal's dissertation later published in ASQ became the definitive research on emotional contagion in organizations. It also launched, launched Sigal's career as one of the top researchers on emotion and affect in organizations. From there, Sigal proceeded to contribute important work on affective diversity in top management teams, emotional culture, affect and creativity. And even studies of love, as we just heard, and loneliness in organizational settings. Let me now say a few words about Sigal's style of research. She was not a typical micro organizational researcher. At least as it's practiced right now at some of the top places in, in, in the U S. She didn't, she didn't just take social psychological theories and try to validate them in an organizational setting. She was truly interested in the workings of organizations and how various psychological processes might explain what goes on in these places. She was almost always attracted to the processes that cross levels of analysis. Usually in an upward direction where individual variables influence group and organizational outcomes. As you can imagine, this style of research. Uh, was, or has been, in direct contrast to reductionism, which is now all the rage in psychological work. Tracing things down to a physiological level. Therefore, in my view, Sigal's work is a prime example. Of what people like Hatson Khan, Carl Weick and others long ago called the social psychology of organizations. We've gone away from that in recent years. And the social psych of organizations is the type of work that I would like to see our field go back to. Rather than the current, simple and more direct application of psychological theory to organizational settings. So this should be where. An understanding of the organizational context is a primary focus, maybe even the. Primary focus rather than organizations' logical processes. Let me conclude by saying something that others probably have already said. Uh, maybe even while I was asleep here in California. Sigal's research interests were basically an extension of her personality. Sigal almost always expressed positive affect toward her work, toward her colleagues and probably everybody else. She was also a prime practitioner of emotional contagion. Even if I were really in a grumpy mood, when the phone rang, usually it was very late at night, the phone would ring. And I'd be lifted up, hearing her voice say, Barry, this is Sigal. Can we talk about a few things? I usually just would drop everything and wanna talk to her. She was a walking positive affect machine and her personality was truly infectious. Like the broaden and build model of creativity or positive emotion would help us generate new ideas. It would push us through the toughest problems or sticking points that always seem to, to crop up during the most interesting or even important. Important, they always run into difficulties and she was great in terms of. I will now end by just restating the obvious. Sigal's untimely passing is such a huge loss in so many ways. I'm still fairly devastated by it and still find it hard to believe that we've lost Sigal so early and in the prime of her life. My only solace is knowing that the joy she radiated may, like the light from distant stars. Keep shining on us for many, many years to come. Thanks.
Thank you, Barry.
Hi, everyone. Shana Chava. I think following Barry's style is a little bit like going after the Beatles or for the millennials here, Taylor Swift. But I will do my best. We have heard so many wonderful things about Sigal's brilliance, her generosity, her affect. And I wanna talk about two things that maybe have been highlighted a little bit less, which are integrity and humility. My relationship with Sigal started when I came to work and interviewed for a job. And I thought it was gonna be a friendly conversation. She showed up more like an FBI interrogator. She had a whole list of questions that she was ready to grill me on. She opened my papers and said, can you tell me who you cited on this page three years ago? And I knew right, right from that moment that this was somebody who's gonna challenge me to think deeper and to be better. And since she was challenging, I decided it might be fun to challenge back. Normally, I tended to be pretty agreeable, but I felt like I should try to rise to the occasion here. And after all, she had shown in her own research that in the presence of someone temporarily acting disagreeable. Agreeable people actually become more disagreeable than their disagreeable peers in the hopes of fitting in, so naturally, that's what I did. And I said, well, I have a question for you. If we have motivation, why do we need emotions? I did not know at the time that if there was one way to anger Sigal, it would be to question the relevance of emotions to organizations. But she didn't get mad. She got curious. She said, well, you've been writing about pro-social motivation, the desire to help others. Where do you think that comes from? She said, it comes from care and that's an emotion and it's right here in your paper. And she flipped to a page in one of my papers and recited to me my own words about affective commitment to the beneficiaries of our work. And she said, look, you wrote the affect in, I think you answered your own question. And I wasn't ready to give up yet. So I said, well, fine, pro-social motivation, I get it, I even said it. But what about intrinsic motivation? Why do we need affect there? And she said, well, where do you think intrinsic motivation comes from? Interest, curiosity, passion, those are emotions. Much to my dismay, I had to admit defeat. And it was not long before I started seeing emotions everywhere. That conversation with Sigal, but more importantly, knowing Sigal motivated me to publish multiple papers featuring emotions, something I had sworn I would never do. But I also got to see her express two emotions that we don't study enough. And I think these emotions are at the very heart of the integrity and the humility that she modeled so consistently. I got to see them both in teaching. As Nancy mentioned earlier, we, for many years, taught a team-delivered course based on a very intensive simulation. And there was a particular day where students had to make a crisis decision. Where we got to see her, her strongest emotions in action. The first, I think the first instance of it for me was a group of students had made a decision that was very clearly in the simulation unethical. And I was a little bit reluctant to call them out on it. And I was a little bit reluctant to call them out on it. Uh, I wanted to, you know, to maintain the positive affectivity in the classroom. I was trying to show companion at love, I was trying to follow everything she had taught me. And she said, absolutely not. We are going to hold these students accountable, and I don't care if they dislike me afterward or if it costs me my teaching ratings. And sure enough, she grilled those students just as hard as she grilled me on the citations in my paper. And I just thought it was a tremendous example of her integrity, that she was willing to sacrifice her own success for a principle that she believed in. Um, even though we weren't teaching an ethics class, right? We were just introducing the students to the science of leadership and teamwork, um, that she was not willing to walk away from that, those values, I thought was was just remarkable and it had a huge impact on me. Um, I guess my, my emotional experience of that interaction and that observation was was one that uh, John Hyden colleagues would call a moral elevation. Um, and that was an effect that Segal consistently had on us, even when she didn't want to, uh, to live by the values that other people were advocating. Um, and a small example was, we may have occasionally had some department meetings that were not a great use of faculty time. Segal felt very strongly that she did not want her time to be wasted. This was a violation of her principles. But she also had a deeply settled, a deeply held set of beliefs around the importance of collectivism and being part of a community. So what did she do? She showed up at those faculty meetings, even though they were a waste of time. But she brought papers with her to read, and she did part of her reviewing work during faculty meetings. And I thought, again, that was so much integrity, right? That, yeah, she, she took matters into her own hands and she used that time effectively, but she still, she still showed up and she honored her responsibility and her commitment to the community. Uh, and I think that was, that was Segal in a nutshell. The other emotion, uh, which I think really speaks to her humility, Nancy alluded to earlier, which is, um, I think Segal was a master of what I've started to think of as humble amusement. Um, I guess it's a form of self-deprecating humor, but she was rarely initiating it. It was mostly thrust upon her. And, um, I guess my favorite moment of of her laughing at herself was was also on the crisis day of our class. So the students make this crisis decision, and then she puts up this triumphant slide, which has Chinese characters on it. And she says to the class, can anyone translate these characters? Does anybody speak Mandarin? And a hand shoots up and a student says, crisis is danger plus opportunity. And Segal just lights up. It's, it's like a, a new child has entered her family. She is so excited, the student nailed it. Yes, yes, a crisis is danger plus opportunity. How did you know that? And she goes on this whole soliloquy. And after the class, one of the TAs comes up to her and says, um, excuse me, Professor Barcy, I just wanted to let you know that the English translation is written on the slide below the Chinese characters. I would have been somewhere between embarrassed and mortified. Segal cracked up. She laughed so hard and so loud. And she not only was able to laugh at herself in that moment, she thought it was so funny that she kept the slide up and went through the same, the same thing in the next section. Uh, just because it was, it was such an enjoyable and delightful moment. And I think it was, it was a great example of, of something that she instilled in me really strongly, which is to take your work very seriously, but not take yourself too seriously. And her ability to, to hold, um, to hold values deeply, but ideas and, and even her own ego lightly, uh, I think was, was just a, a thing to witness. Um, and I, I should just note also that that slide stayed in there, uh, for the following year too, until somebody gave us another piece of information, which was that we had a mistranslation and the characters did not in fact say danger plus, uh, danger is crisis, crisis is danger plus opportunity at all. And at that point, it was a matter of integrity to abandon that slide. Uh, but I still miss it for the record. Um, you know, of all the things that I miss, um, I think, you know, taking care of our food was a, was a big thing. Um, even in virtual meetings, there were meals coordinated by Segal. Um, I think taking care of the community was a huge contribution that she made, but also making sure that everybody learned from their experiences and reflected on their experiences was something that she was deeply invested in. And one of the hardest parts for me of, of this past year and of even giving this, this little speech is she was the person I would go to for notes, and she would tell me exactly what I screwed up and how I could do better. Um, and I think we all benefited from that greatly. And it's part of her legacy now for all of us to give those notes to the people around us. Thank you all.
Um, you know, after being, after being married, uh, to Segal for thirty five years and following her and, you know, following Barry and Adam, I'm, I'm already used to basically, you know, so. But, eh, the, eh, and Adam, what you don't know is, eh, the evening before she went out, uh, before she came out to that interview, she prepared for that meeting. She told, she, she was told that you've got a photographic memory. She said, I'm gonna catch it. And she did the research, basically. And it was so, but, eh, and Barry, I think also one of the follow ups to, to your study basically was, eh, definitely I recall that day when I had to, she sent me on the air and to buying, uh, going out at six AM to buy dozens of donuts. Eh, and of course, being, you know, the height of the health awareness back then, eh, also getting bagels and cream cheese to be able to then get down to Santa Clara to be able to run that study with a positive affect. And but, eh, you know, but bottom line is though, first of all, I want to thank everyone. I want to thank Kliat and Arik and everyone for organizing this event. Eh, it's, it's special because, you know, many of the names that we've, eh, that we saw today, eh, some of the names we saw in Neil's, eh, conference from ninety six, the stories that we heard. And the kids will kind of probably, eh, Sivan, Yitai, Maya, they can attest to the fact that all of these were common names that we've sort of, we've been, we've been here, we were hearing about, you know, around the dinner table for over thirty years. I can't really describe how much this event means to us and to Segal's parents, the kids, eh, which were all here, myself, and how it's difficult to talk about Segal in past tense, but nearly twelve months after her passing, eh, we still witnessed the impact that she had eh, on those around her eh, and the community at large. The, I think one thing that comes very clearly across is that this impact is a clear result of a unique combination. And not just of innovative and groundbreaking research. And even though I obviously don't have the professional capacity to, eh, provide, you know, provide an opinion about that. But it was also about from her personality who Segal was. And, you know, attention to detail, we hear about how she, eh, her, how strong she had an attention to detail. And, you know, and how she would, and I even saw that at home, how she would, eh, pay, eh, focus so much on details of surveys as she was designing these and running these. Eh, but anyone who also knew Segal knew that that attention was probably also pretty selective. And, you know, time management was not exactly her forte. Eh, even though she would never take the blame on herself eh, when possible. And, and, you know, and even the attention to detail. I mean, you know, I remember one instance once where when confronted with a picture of pigs, eh, she couldn't identify what was missing. And, and for many, many years, she stayed convinced that pigs do not have tails. And but, eh, but the bottom line is that, you know, she was, you know, when needed, eh, in really when it was really important, eh, she paid attention to details. And as, eh, you know, as Adam mentioned, you know, when organizing a conference, oh, everyone always wanted Segal to be on the manager, eh, on the organizing team because everyone knew if nothing else, regardless of the substance of the conference, that people will definitely be well fed. And bottom line is, I can't really comment on the essence of Segal's research. And, you know, throughout this event, we've heard a lot of the impact that she had eh, on the field. And I can't really add much on that, but what I can maybe provide is some insight as to the why eh, coming from who she was. And back from the beginning, from when we first met thirty five, well, we got married thirty five, thirty six years ago. But eh, even before that, Segal would always like to delve into the underlying behavior of people. And, and, eh, you know, anyone who's aware to Segal's tenacity and, and probably aware to my own proclivity for being an introvert probably wonders how he survived thirty five years of a solid marriage. Eh, but she really was always interested in psychology, going back to her undergraduate days eh, where eh, her first research eh, with Bird Raven on power dynamics. And I remember the smile on her face when she eh, came one and a half hours late eh, to the car that I was waiting for after the original interview with Barry saying, I'm gonna, I'm gonna study with this person. And one can really say that Segal's true greatness was the early insistence of the human element eh, in eh, in running an organization. Back in those days, eh, early, you know, late eighties, early nineties, eh, you know, when Alan Greenspan was still talking about the irrational exuberance and its irrational impact upon economic behavior. Eh, when the common notion was that we should all leave our emotions at the front door when we clock into work, Segal pushed back. She insisted that organizations are nothing more than the amalgamation basically of the human elements and that emotions are a critical driver of human behavior. And to say that emotions are not part of organizational behaviors, really like to say that electrons are not part of the atomic structure. Segal insisted that eh, to understand an organization, one has to understand this basic driver of human behavior, eh, emotions. And she was a twenty five year old scholar, be- beginning mother, eh, when embarking on this path, pushing against some very well entrenched preconceptions and biases. And those were, those were hard pushes. And one can only imagine the courage that it took. And, and I guess history speaks for itself, right? You know, how right she was. And, and today, after thirty five years, it's commonly accepted that emotions are not left at the front door and understanding emotions eh, and human behavior will, not can, but will help us better manage an organization. And to add another element that people might not be aware, eh, you know, where does this come from? Eh, Segal's parents who are with us here today. And it's probably to them that we actually owe a lot of thanks to, to all this because, eh, you see, Segal's interest in the human behavior actually stemmed probably from their dinner table discussions where her parents eh, who were major managers in major corporations, they would talk about their day at work, their challenges, but more often than not, eh, that a conversation would probably evolve around the interaction with their colleagues, their managers, their staff. They discussed the why and the how, not just the what. And this instilled in Segal her natural curiosity to better understand what are the drivers of these interactions. And so, and for those of you who do have kids, take this lesson home. Eh, you didn't take conversations eh, do have an impact and they don't fall in their fears. And, and you have no idea where it might take eh, what it might lead to in the future. Eh, just briefly going to the other side, eh, you know, who Segal was. Eh, well, you know, on a personal side, I can probably say she was a lovely wife, a wonderful mother, a true partner. And, you know, frankly, I personally witnessed many entrepreneurs eh, who had to back out of what was eventually going to be a successful venture only because of lack of support from home. And I can really say that without Segal's support, I could not have achieved what I have done over my career. But, you know, but this is not about me. I mean, I could go on for another two hours talking about that, just that aspect. But eh, this is about Segal. And the best testament, eh, you know, Nancy talked about before, a purely objective observation about who she was eh, as a person is really is that outpouring of love, respect, and appreciation eh, those last few weeks she was there with us. Those weren't just hollow statements that people made. It wasn't just, you know, people eh, sending an email or something eh, just sort of eh, saying eh, making some kind of statement. And many of people made the trek from across the nation to come spend it just a few minutes with Segal and then essentially turn back and head back to the airport. And the fingers and toes of my hand, two hands and feet are probably not enough to count the number of people who said that with a simple conversation, she literally changed their careers. And you see, many times she and I would talk eh, long days, and she would casually mention that she spoke with somebody in the corridor at a conference. And oftentimes she was late to eh, meetings or to the classroom there because of these conversations. So it was easy to distract her. She, at the time, didn't attribute much of these conversations. They were interesting, eh, that's what one does. You know, one, one talks with colleagues, eh, one's interested in what they have to say, regardless whether they're junior, senior, whatever it is. One listen, not only was it the polite thing to do, it was the basic human interaction. And she never gave people the sense that they were not important enough for her, and people felt it. People appreciated that this groundbreaking research did not hold herself above them and actually listened to their quandaries, their, eh, the professional or personal, and helped them think through. And by sharing her own obstacles and professional questions, eh, she made them understand that they're not alone, that they shouldn't give up, and they do have a future in the profession. And Segal didn't think twice about all these interactions. Their impact only hit those last few weeks. But I what can say with confidence that's reassuring, what was reassuring to her is that eh, being aware that she had that kind of positive impact, it was unintentional, but then again, that's usually what the most impactful is. And what time and time came through, eh, I think, and also what we heard about from today is Segal's humanity. Eh, you know, essentially eh, when writing about companion and love, I think Barry mentioned it before. She was really writing about herself. She cared, she was human. She had her foibles, eh, and we all laughed at them, but the biggest person, you know, the biggest laughter would be actually from her. And, you know, and she, this cut the tension, it made people feel at ease around her. Eh, she was the first to help others without asking what's in it for her. She really believed that people are essentially good. Bottom line is, I hope that these last few minutes of rambling eh, will help you all eh, help not only understand Segal, who she was and what drove her, but hopefully help you also be better researchers. What I can say though, very easily, is that I definitely know she helped us all be better people. Thanks, thank you all.
Yes, eh, we're definitely late in this, eh, meeting and session. Thank you all for attending, thank you for coming. And eh, we have the recording of this, so we'll share that as well. I really appreciate if your time coming, although late, crazy times and with this conference going on, then we think, thank you all. And eh.